Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 9th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kallo has the dog for today. Beautiful collie mix.
Our featured pet is a male collie. He was found off of Fall Road in Alariah. Great personality, friendly. How old do you think he is, Jack?
I'd say four or five.
Four or five years old. He's looking for a good home. He'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock. And if he's not your type of dog, stop in, we've got plenty more for adoption. Doc, you need a new dog?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Oh, look at that beautiful black lab. He's checking our dog out, Dr. Crowe. I have a thought for today, and Commissioner Kallo is absolutely going to love this. And after I say it, he's probably going to give me a hard time. It's better to be boldly decisive and risk being wrong than to agonize at length and be right too late.
God bless.
I knew he'd like it, Madam Clerk.
At 9:45 we'll have a presentation from Children's Services unless you'd like to do it now.
I think we should do it right now, they're here.
Barb Kilgore, Chair.
Good morning, Barb Kilgore.
My old neighbor.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is Barb Kilgore, and I am the Chair of Lorraine County Children's Services Board.
Thank you.
The Lorraine County Children's Services Board respectfully request the Lorraine County Commissioners to place a levy that funds both the services to abused and neglected children and the county's obligation to the State's Bureau for Children with Medical Handicaps on the November 2010 general election ballot. This levy will be a 1.5 mil replacement levy. The levy generates approximately 50% of the revenue needed to fund services to abused and neglected children. In 2009, the local levy dollars accounted for approximately $9.5 million out of the total 18.3 million annual budget. To give you an idea of the services provided, Lorraine County Children's Services received over 3,800 referrals in 2009. That's one referral every two and a half hours. The caseworkers average 10 to 12 cases per worker. Our staff supervise approximately 100 foster families and provide home studies and support to kinship families. We provide ancillary services like independent living, alcohol and drug screening, and school success. The agency has reduced expenses by $2.2 million a year since 2008 through reducing ancillary services and reducing staff by 10 FTEs. Over the cycle of the next five years, our revenues from property taxes will be further reduced by about $300,000 each year on average due to the elimination of the tangible personal property tax. The 1.5 mil replacement levy will generate $9.587 million compared to the $9.55 million it currently generates. Again, the current levy generates 9.55 million. Renewing the current levy would generate $8.8 million. That's $700 less than it currently generates. Replacing the levy would generate $9.587 million. That's $37,000 more per year than it currently does. The replacement levy makes it more likely that our agency will be able to keep the current level of services for our communities' abused and neglected children. What does this mean for taxpayers? For each $100,000 in property value, the replacement will cost an additional 28 cents per month to continue providing core services to abused and neglected children. The replacement will not allow the agency to grow, expand, or add back the program cuts that have already been made, but it will help keep core services intact for the communities' abused and neglected children. Our commitment to quality and continuous improvement is only surpassed by the commitment to the abused and neglected children. We serve. Our practices, services, and initiatives meet high national standards. We take our responsibility to our community and to our clients seriously, and we welcome the opportunity to demonstrate that we do the right things right the first time, every time, on time, one child at a time. We provide on behalf of Lorraine County prompt investigations of allegations of child abuse and neglect. We provide high-quality protective services to our children and their families. We integrate and carry foster care and adoption services. As you already know, our organization, including its fiscal management, operations, programs, and services, is open for your inspection. Indeed, since 1999, we have earned and maintained national accreditation through the Council on Accreditation for Children and Family Services, Inc. We also monitor regularly by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. Lorraine County Children's Services is an important part of the children's safety net in Lorraine County. In order to continue to meet our obligations and to help the community to keep its commitment to the well-being of its children, I ask that you place the 1.5 mil replacement levy that funds the continuous services to abused and neglected children on the November 2010 general election ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Commissioners, do we have questions or comments?
It's nice to see the presentation on your money and where it sits. It made it a public understanding. It's only a quarter, even though it's a replacement, it's not like you're building a larger entity to work. It's just a matter of keeping things status quo, it looks like, so no.
That is correct.
I do have one question, Teresa. Barb said, I believe, 1.5.
It is a 1.5.
And the agenda says 1.2.
Yes, it's a 1.5.
So we have to note that it's 1.5 mils replacement levy. So, any other comments by members from the Children's Services Board? If not, I'll move for approval of the request as outlined by Barb Kilgore.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Very good job.
Thank you for all the work that you do on a volunteer basis for the Children's Services. Okay, Madam Clerk, now we'll do the regular order of business.
Under resolutions, there are no Job and Family Services bills, investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
I'm sure Mr. Cordes wants us to have an executive session, maybe.
Well, I would like to have an executive session. I'd like to discuss some potential hires for our part-time intermittent crew at the recycling collection center. Also, we have the summer youth program that we're getting ready to ramp pretty quick here. We need some temporary workers working in positions with the summer youth and hiring and so forth. Need to talk about those positions with you. And also, I met with some labor people yesterday, want to talk to you about our ongoing contract negotiations. All three of those subjects are allowable under the Sunshine Law, so I would ask that we go into an executive session at the conclusion of our business to discuss those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved way of the reading, the same of the County Commissioners meeting went, so June 2nd, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Joan Family, approved intern fiscal year 11, help me grow subsidy agreement with Ohio Department of Ohio and Commissioners and Ministry of Agent for and on behalf of Joan Family First in the amount of $985,319 effective July 1st, 2010 through June 30, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Under Job and Family, approved intern software maintenance agreement with Maximus Columbus for the quarterly information consolidation system plus in county version random moment sampling system in the amount of 2,500 effective July 1st, 2010 through June 30, 2011, and authorized director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors approval as two forms.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the engineer war contract Shelley Company Twinsburg in the amount of $1,724,735.30 for station road resurfacing project. Five bids were received on June 4th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Notice to proceed will be submitted to OPWC, which will be used for any amounts over the federal crab, which no more change will be held and will be paid 100% air funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advertise public notice announcement requesting statements qualifications for firms interested in being considered for a contract to provide engineering services for the various bridge rehabilitation projects. Notice be in the Chronicle on June 10th and received until 4:00 PM on July 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorized Lorraine County Sheriff to apply for the deer grant in the amount of $20,794, which represents 50% of the deer officer base salary for the nine-month school year. Local match is $20,794 to create from the sheriff's salary account. Application is due by June 15th.
Also moved.
I'll second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just want to say, for those who attended our Best of Lorraine County last week, it was a resounding success. I understand it was well over 300 to 350 people that came out. Most of the vendors and facilities and service providers here in Lorraine County that were nominated and some that weren't nominated came out and set up tables and booths. It was just a fantastic, fun evening to highlight, spotlight some of the wonderful things going on in Lorraine County. They haven't announced the results yet because the balloting took place, casting of the votes for the ballot took place at the event. So hopefully soon we'll know the outcome of that. But it really gave a positive light to all the wonderful things available here in Lorraine County. And so, people should read polls and look around, and they should stay here in Lorraine County and recreate and spend their disposable income here to support our economy. It worked out well, and I think next year will be even better. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have a number of items with Mrs. Davis, but I don't have anything for the Commissioners today.
Right.
Commissioners, your court.
First, I want to thank Mayor Kraschinko and his administration in the city of Lorraine, Commissioner Kallo, State Rep. Joe Kazura, and all of City Council, and all the veterans that showed up on Monday night to support the St. Joseph Center. Let's hope that the administration can come to terms with the potential buyer and we can expand that facility to make it a one-stop shop for all of our veterans in downtown Lorraine. I know we've held up a couple transfers from our Veteran Services. There was one from relief to salaries and one from relief to travel. And I, hopefully, my fellow Commissioners got copies of the report that we received from Don Bates over at Veteran Services. It's a pretty thick report, but the very last page is where it tells all the story. And it looks to me as though we're serving less veterans, and we're asking for more salaries, and we're asking for more travel. And I would really like it if, Mr. Cordes, if you could ask Mr. Bates to come in and explain this. I'm thinking in times such as this that the need for veteran services would be greater, not less. And why we, you know, keep having these transfers from relief? We need to, you know, beef up our relief, not reduce our relief.
I don't disagree. As a 16-year veteran, I think you know my feelings are very strong, like yours are, with regard to service to veterans, especially those that have found themselves on troubled We've experienced a number of concerns with the expansion and direction. I've tried to have those discussions, and I will have them again. But I will talk to Mr. Bates. I know he's had some personal challenges, and I will see what his availability is. You did ask for that information, it was provided.
Which makes me even more concerned now that I see the facts.
Well, I think, you know, I had indicated to you that there was some inconsistencies with those things. I will get it set up for you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Done. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, again, kudos to City Council and the Administration in Lorraine for helping keep that building open while we work out an arrangement with the developer. This week we had a solid waste policy committee meeting. We are also asking, since we're on TV here, people to apply for the board. We are going to have at least three openings, it looks like. Beth Barber, who has been the Chair for as long as I've been around, serving 16 years, is moving. She's actually recommended somebody from the Sustainability Department at Norton, so I'm going to speak to a Mr. Schneider that Tony Ann talked to yesterday. But we are looking for people to appoint to that board. We worked through all the final numbers. We're still looking at whatever we'll have left for community grants, if there are any. The budget is quite low this year, but the committee did vote to add another $50,000 to our revolving loan fund every year.
That's good. We can really use that.
Especially in the case of what we're looking at coming through to us now. We've got one pending and...
Yeah, that's one of the tools that we're using as a local attraction piece. So not only do we get them to use sustainable building materials, but we can also use it as an economic development incentive tool with a lot of flexibility, so thank you.
Which a lot of communities don't have. So I want to thank Beth for all her service. But if anyone is interested in serving on the Solid Waste Policy Committee, we've had a couple people call. It does not pay. It's a volunteer position for the county.
I get lots of votes.
We're going to re-advertise for it, but if you'd like, call up to the Commissioners' office, we will take applications for that. Also, item nine under Board Business, we were able to, the announcement for the collection center on June 19th at 9:00 AM. A lot of our local vendors are supplying hot dogs, hamburgers, events for kids, for the grand opening of our collection center on 540 South Abbey Road, is it? Yeah, 540 South Abbey Road, and that'll be Saturday, June 19th. So, it's been a long time coming for a collection center. Running back in 2004, I think I was the only candidate who was for a collection center.
I thought it was a recycling center back then. They never called it a collection center.
Depending on what the wording was, but yeah, I got my butt kicked pretty good for that, but it looks like we're going to have it finally, so that's the end of my report.
Commissioner, one last word on the center. We're also doing a collection right after the opening. It's going to be a hugely, we anticipate a hugely busy day, so, you know, people may want to stagger how they come in. I think we're going to start collections probably by about 10:00. We're doing the ribbon cutting and all that, I believe it's around 9:00, 9:15, and so forth. But we're going to be staggering the cars all through the big parking lot rather than coming in off of Abbey, because we can't stack that, that many. And what we could stack inside, we're using that area initially for the ribbon cutting and opening of the center, so we won't be able to stag in the corridor inside the building. So folks may want to just, you know, give some serious consideration to thinking about how they want to come throughout the morning rather than everybody showing up at...
10:00.
At 10:00 when the door opens right away.
I think we should talk about what items we're going to be accepting at the location on that day, so they don't start bringing, like, big console televisions and things like that.
I can kind of wing it here. I don't have the list in front of me. Some of the things that we will not be taking, and I'm glad, actually, for this opportunity. I should have thought about that. Things like motor oil, we won't take. There's plenty of places out in the community. We do not want to compete with the private sector for collection operations. We won't be taking aluminum cans or scrap metal or things like that. And people are going to go, "Well, why are the collection center, you're not doing that?" We have surveyed the local providers of services and found that there is sufficient ability to recycle those things in our community already, and we should not, and government should never compete with the private sector when they have those things available. Now, since they said we don't take motor oil, will we take, say, diesel fuel or gasoline? Yes, we will. There's very limited availability to dispose of them properly within this community. So we've done, I want to call it an extensive research, but we made sure that we're augmenting the things that already exist here. Will we take electronic devices? Absolutely. It's one of the big things, trying to get the e-waste out of the landfill and then get it into recycling. We'll take TVs, things like that. No console TVs, no TVs bigger than 27 inches.
50 pounds.
Thereabouts, but we say 27 inch. We don't have any Arnold Schwarzeneggers over there picking stuff up out of these cars. We'll take all kinds of paints, polymers, paint thinners, detergents, drain cleaners, Clorox, things along those lines that you may find that you had cleaners that you don't want anymore, you want to dispose of. Please don't put them down in the sink, bring them over to this collection center. Just put them in a box, bring them over. We have an availability, we have a pamphlet that's going out, and a list you can check off because you have to fill it out, what the things you're disposing of. Those things that are unidentified, we have a special procedure for handling those and so forth. Right now, we're partnered with Ross Environmental, local company, is going to take the waste out of there. And they've been over at the center doing dry runs with some of our new employees, bringing mock cars in and bringing in various containers and how to handle them and what needs to be done. So we're very excited about getting the center open. We ran into some challenges, as you well know, throughout the process. We were able to overcome those things. If there's a question about what you can bring or what you can't bring, they can contact the Solid Waste Department, and they'll be giving some guidance on that.
We'll be on our website, may I any chance, what we will take and won't take? If it's posted, I would hope, by the end of this week, first of next week?
I would hope it could be posted today, because I got the list.
Oh, okay.
It may well be out there. And of course, we take tires. We're going to have a self-service area that'll be open during the day for tires, so you don't even have to wait in the big, long line. You can drive up to the bins, we'll open them during the day, and you can put your tires in there. Obviously, we don't take commercial tires, and we don't take, we do not take tires and/or disposal chemicals from businesses. They're responsible for their own.
Presidential.
But that's going to help with the tires, because it's a self-serve area to drive up. Now, for those people that may or may not follow the rules, we do have the whole area under surveillance, and we are looking for those people that, you know, leave stuff standing in front of the door or outside the fence or anything else. So we had to do that because we were afraid that people would come up on off-hours and just leave stuff stacked all over the parking lot. It has happened before, when we've done collection days, we've shown up at the collection day and find stuff stacked on the corner before we even got there to set up the trailers. It's going to be a learning experience. I hope the public is patient with us. We're going to see what works and amplify that, and what doesn't work, we're going to modify that, so that we provide a good service. We're open Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday. Monday from 10 until 6, Wednesday 10 until 6, Saturday from, excuse me, Monday, Wednesday at noon until 6, Saturday is 10 to 6. If that doesn't prove sufficient, then we have the ability to open additional hours depending on the volume that's taken. Hope everybody comes out, and it will be a day for the families. There are hot dogs, going to be one of them, romper jumper rooms for the kids.
Face painting.
You know, the new transit facility's over there, so they'll be able to see what we're doing with our transit maintenance garage. We'll probably have that open if anybody wants to look, and we've got the area pretty well done up. And obviously, this is the Port Authority's commercial complex that the building was donated, and we're still looking for tenants for 50,000 square feet, so I've got to put a little ad out there to fill up other parts of the building, and we have very aggressive rental rates if anybody's interested. Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. End of my report.
Okay. For you, Teresa. So you and Jerry. Yesterday, the West Shore Commuter Rail Task Force had a meeting in my office, and we were advised by Pam Novak, who works for Lorraine County Transit, i.e. the Commissioners, that she had received permission to submit to the Federal Transit Administration the Alternatives Analysis Grant for the West Shore Commuter Rail. So we've been working on that for a long, long time. This is the earmark that Betty Sutton gave to us, the Commissioners, in 2008, and now we finally applied for it. We expect within the next 30 to 60 days that the grant funds will be available. And also, yesterday, we had an intern working with Virginia Haynes, and he has accessed Facebook and Twitter for us, so that's the new exciting thing that's coming along, and he's done an excellent job. So, visit us there. The other thing, at 11:00 today, Fund for Economic Future is going to be announcing who the winners of the $330,000 are. And the Commissioners, together with the Engineer and the Alliance, are one of the finalists. We don't know if we're in the top three, though, so we're waiting for the vote totals to come in to see if we get any money or not for our stormwater project. So those are some exciting things happening. That's it. Madam Clerk? God bless you.
Thank you.
Pass me along.
Commissioners, Senate proclamation proclaiming June 15th as Elder Abuse Day to Job and Families, Board Correspondents?
Remove the reading, be waived.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board? I see no takers. Move that we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator. And I guess, Jerry, you didn't have any, did you? Okay, just the Administrator.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. copy of the agenda.
Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving thirteen counties secure and safe Ohio Ride Share makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. One-eight-hundred-eight-two-five-ride, or register online at ohio rideshare.com. Point, click, ride.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh-three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen-ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen-twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen-oh-seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen-oh-seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen-seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen-ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen-thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen-eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's waterwell. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen-ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen-thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen-twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen-eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen-fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskiville, today the intersection of Roots Fifty-Eight and One Thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen-thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen-seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen-oh-nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen-seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen-fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen-eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen-seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen-fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen-twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen-twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen-sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon Ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen-seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the Center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rosson in eighteen-sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossons were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen-seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Aleria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen-sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen-twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen-forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Aleria and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen-seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen-twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Aleria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base, as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen-seventeen, moved from New York State to the one hundred and sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen-twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen-eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen-seventy to nineteen-hundred. The County Fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, The Spirit of Seventy-Six. In eighteen-eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen-twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen-twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen-eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen-twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen-thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only coed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen-ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen-twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen-eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen-twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen-twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen-twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen-twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen-twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen-thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen-twelve. By eighteen-twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen-twenty-one. By eighteen-thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated Township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LeGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen-twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen-twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name LeGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen-twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LeGrange. By eighteen-seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LeGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcocks, who built the first frame house in eighteen-thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen-thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen-thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen-thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen-fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen-ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized, or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen-thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen-thirty-five, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen-twenty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen-eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and, obviously, stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So, basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that, quite frankly, shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say "left, right, left, behind you, in front of you" once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Spansky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, 'Look left, look right, look left.'" So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, "Oh, ooh." And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know? We'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run." And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and "No, we shouldn't do this." So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways, because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever. It's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade, and that is Otto the Otto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no! Those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
What's up, Asimo? How's it going? Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So, what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean? Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Otto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that, where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
Um, I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's, like, cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road, so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to... If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned.
Um, I think that it was good, because I didn't know that you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids, if they don't know what to do, by crossing the road.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars. Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town, and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?" And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road, and I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Would you stand for the Fudge of Allegiance, please?
My flag, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, and welcome to the June 9th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kallo has the dog for today. Beautiful collie mix.
Our featured pet is a male collie. He was found off of Fall Road in Elyria. Great personality, friendly. How old do you think he is, Jack? Four or five years old. He's looking for a good home. He'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock, and if he's not your type of We can donate this dog to Children's Services today. Doc, you need a new dog?
I don't think so.
Oh, look at that beautiful black lab. He's checking our dog out, Dr. Crow. I have a thought for today, and Commissioner Kallo is absolutely going to love this, and after I say it, he's probably going to give me a hard time. It's better to be boldly decisive and risk being wrong than to agonize at length and be right too late.
God bless.
I knew he'd like it, Madam Clerk.
In 9:45, we'll have a presentation from Children's Services, unless you'd like to do it now.
I think we should do it right now, they're here.
Barb Kilgore, yes, Chair.
Good morning, Barb Kilgore.
My old neighbor.
Good morning. My name is Barb Kilgore, and I am the Chair of Lorraine County Children's Services Board.
Thank you.
The Lorraine County Children's Services Board respectfully requests Lorraine County Commissioners to place a levy that funds both the services to abused and neglected children, and the county's obligation to the State's Bureau for Children with Medical Handicaps on the November 2010 general election ballot. This levy will be a 1.5 mil replacement levy. The levy generates approximately 50% of the revenue needed to fund services to abused and neglected children. In 2009, the local levy dollars accounted for approximately $9.5 million out of the total $18.3 million annual budget. To give you an idea of the services provided, Lorraine County Children's Services received over 3,800 referrals in 2009. That's one referral every two and a half hours. The caseworkers average 10 to 12 cases per worker. Our staff supervise approximately 100 foster families, and provide home studies and support to kinship families. We provide ancillary services like independent living, alcohol and drug screening, and school success. The agency has reduced expenses by $2.2 million a year since 2008 through reducing ancillary services and reducing staff by 10 FTEs. Over the cycle of the next five years, our revenues from property taxes will be further reduced by about $300,000 each year on average, due to the elimination of the tangible personal property tax. The 1.5 mil replacement levy will generate $9.587 million compared to the $9.55 million it currently regenerates. Again, the current levy generates $9.55 million. Renewing the current levy would generate $8.8 million. That's $700 less than it currently generates. Replacing the levy would generate $9.587 million. That's $37,000 more per year than it currently does. The replacement levy makes it more likely that our agency will be able to keep the current level of services for our communities' abused and neglected children. What does this mean for taxpayers? For each $100,000... For each hundred thousand dollars in property value, the replacement will cost an additional twenty eight cents per month to continue providing core services to abused and neglected children. The replacement will not allow the agency to grow, expand, or add back the program cuts that have already been made. But it will help keep core services intact for the communities abused and neglected children. Our commitment to quality and continuous improvement is only surpassed by the commitment to the abused and neglected children. We serve. Our practices, services, and initiatives meet high national standards. We take our responsibility to our community and to our clients seriously. And we welcome the opportunity to demonstrate that we do the right things right the first time. Every time, on time, one child at a time. We provide on behalf of, on behalf of Lorraine County, prompt investigations of allegations of child abuse and neglect. We provide high-quality protective services to our children and their families. We integrate and carry foster care and adoption services. As you already know, our organization, including its fiscal management, operations, programs, and services, is open for your inspection. Indeed, since nineteen ninety-nine, we have earned and maintained national accreditation through the Council on Accreditation for Children and Family Services, Inc. We also monitor regularly by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. Lorraine County Children's Services is an important part of the children's safety net in Lorraine County. In order to continue to meet our obligations and to help the community to keep its commitment to the well-being of its children, I ask that you place the one point five mil replacement levy that funds the continuous services to abused and neglected children on the November two thousand ten general election ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Uh, Commissioners, do we have questions or comments?
Well, it's nice to see the presentation on your money and where it sits. I mean, the public will understand it's only a pour, even though it's a replacement, it's not like you're building a larger entity to work. It's just a matter of keeping things status quo, it looks like, so.
That is correct.
I do have one question, Teresa. Um, Barb said, I believe, one point five.
It is a one point five.
And the agenda says one point two. So we have to note that it's one point five mils replacement levy. So, any other comments by members from the Children's Services Board? If not, I'll move for approval of the request as outlined by Barb Kilgore.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Very good job.
Thank you for all the work that you do on a volunteer basis for the Children's Services. Okay, Madam Clerk, now we'll do the regular order of business.
Under resolutions, there are no Job and Family Services bills, investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo? Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners?
I'm sure Mr. Cordes wants us to have an executive session, maybe.
Well, I would like to have an executive session. Uh, the, I'd like to discuss some potential hires for our part-time intermittent crew at the recycling collection center. Also, we have the summer youth program that we're getting ready to ramp pretty quick here. We need some temporary workers uh working in positions with the summer youth and hiring and so forth. Need to talk about those positions with you. And also, uh, I, I met with our, some labor people yesterday, wanted to talk to you about our ongoing contract negotiations. All three of those subjects are allowable under the sunshine laws. So I would ask that we go into an executive session at the conclusion of our business to discuss those items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved the reading of the same of the County Commissioners' meeting, June second, two thousand ten.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Joan Family, approve an intern fiscal year eleven to help me grow a subsidy agreement with Ohio Department of Ohio and Commissioners' Administration Agent for and on behalf of Joan Family first in the amount of nine hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred nineteen effective July first, two thousand ten through June thirty, two thousand eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve an intern software maintenance agreement with Maximus Columbus for the quarterly information consolidation system plus in county version random moment sampling system amount of twenty-five hundred effective July first, two thousand ten through June thirty, two thousand eleven and authorize director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors approval S two four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the engineer war contracts, Jelly Company Twinsburg in the amount of one million seven hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty cents for station road resurfacing project. Five bids were received on June fourth, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Notice to proceed will be submitted to OPWC, which will be used for any amounts over the federal craft, which no change will be held and will be paid one hundred percent airplane.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Aye.
Advertise public notice announcement requesting statements qualifications for firms interested in being considered for a contract to provide engineering services for the various bridge rehabilitation project. Notice to be in the Chronicle on June tenth and received until four P M. on July twelfth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorize Lorraine County Sheriff to apply for the deer grant in the amount of twenty thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars, which represents fifty percent of the deer officer base salary. For the nine-month school year, local match is twenty thousand seven hundred ninety-four to create from the sheriff's salary account. Application is due by June fifteenth.
Also moved.
I'll second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, just want to say, uh, for those who, uh, attended, uh, what best of Lorraine County last week, it was a resounding success. I understand it was, well, with three hundred to three hundred fifty people that came out. Most of the, um, vendors and, um, facilities and service providers here in Lorraine County that were nominated and some that weren't nominated, came out and set up tables and booths. It was just a fantastic, fun, uh, evening to highlight, spotlight some of the wonderful things going on in, in Lorraine County. They haven't announced the results yet cause the balloting, uh, took place, uh, casting of the votes for the ballots took place at the, uh, the event. So hopefully soon we'll, we'll know the outcome of that. But it really gave a positive light to, uh, all the wonderful things available here in Lorraine County. And so, uh, people should read polls and, and look around and they should stay here in Lorraine County and recreate and spend their disposable income here to support our economy. It worked out well and I think next year will be even better. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have a number of items with Mrs. Davis, but I don't have anything for the Commissioners today.
Right.
Commissioners' report.
First, I want to thank Mirka Shinko and his, uh, administration in the city of Lorraine, Commissioner Kalo, uh, State Rep. Joe Kazura, and all of City Council, and all the veterans that showed up on Monday night to support the St. Joseph's Center. Uh, let's hope that the administration can come to terms with the potential buyer and we can expand that facility to make it a one-stop shop for all of our veterans in downtown Lorraine. I know we've held up a couple of transfers from our Veteran Services. Um, there was one from relief to salaries and one from relief to travel. And I, hopefully, the, my fellow Commissioners got copies of the report that we received from Don Bates over at Veteran Services. And it is a pretty thick report, uh, but it, the, the very last page is where it tells all the story. And it looks to me as though we're serving less veterans and we're asking for more salaries and we're asking for more travel. And I would really like it if, Mr. Cordes, if you could ask Mr. Bates to come in and explain this. I'm thinking in times such as this that the need for veteran services would be greater, not less. And why, why we, you know, keep having these transfers from relief? We need to, you know, beef up our relief, not reduce our relief.
Uh, I don't disagree. As a, as a sixteen-year veteran, I think you know my feelings are very strong like yours are with regard to, uh, service to veterans, especially those that have found themselves on troubled times. The, uh, we've, we've experienced a number of concerns with, with the expansion and direction. Uh, I've tried to have those discussions and I will have them again. But I will talk to, uh, Mr. Bates. I know he has been, he's had some personal challenges. And, uh, I will see what his availability is. You did ask for that information, it was provided.
Which makes me even more concerned now that I see the facts that.
Well, I think, you know, I had indicated to you that there was some, some inconsistencies with those, those things. I will, uh, I will get a setup for you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, again, kudos to, uh, City Council and the administration in Lorraine for helping keep that building open while we work on an arrangement with a developer. This week we had a solid waste policy committee meeting. We are also asking, since we're on TV here, people to apply for the board. We are going to have at least three openings, it looks like. Beth Barber, who has been the Chair for as long as I've been around, serving sixteen years, is moving. She's actually recommended somebody from the Sustainability Department at Nordson. So I'm going to speak to a Mr. Schneider that Tony Ann talked to yesterday. But we are looking for people to appoint to that board. We worked through all the final numbers. We're still looking at whatever we'll have left for community grants. If there are any, the budget is quite low this year. But the committee did vote to add another fifty thousand dollars to our revolving loan fund every year.
That's good, we, we, we can really use that.
Especially in the case of what we're looking at coming through to us now. We've got one pending and.
Yeah, that, that, that's one of the tools that we're using as a local attraction piece. So not only do we get them to, um, use, um, sustainable, um, building materials, but we can also use it as an economic development incentive tool with a lot of flexibility. So thank you.
Which a lot of communities don't have. So I mean, want to thank, uh, Beth for all her service. Uh, but if anyone is interested in serving on the solid waste policy committee, we've had a couple of people call, it does not pay. It's a volunteer position for the county.
Lots of those.
We're going to re-advertise for it. But if you'd like, call up to the Commissioners' office, we will take applications for that. Uh, also, item nine, under, uh, Board Business, we were able to, uh, the announcement for the collection center on June nineteenth at nine A M. A lot of our local vendors are supplying hot dogs, hamburgers, uh, events for kids for the grand opening of our collection center on five forty South Abbey Road, is it? Yeah, five forty South Abbey Road, and that'll be Saturday, June nineteenth. So it's been a long time coming for a collection center. Running back in two thousand and four, I think I was the only candidate who was for a collection center.
I thought it was a recycling center back then. They never called it a collection center.
Depending on what the wording was, but yeah, I got my butt kicked pretty good for that. But it looks like we're going to have it finally, so, uh, that's the end of my report.
Commissioner, one last word on the, on the center. Uh, we're also doing a collection right after the opening. It's going to be a hugely, we anticipate a hugely busy day. So, you know, people may want to stagger how they come in. I think we're going to start collections probably by about ten o'clock. We're doing the ribbon cutting and all that, I believe it's around nine, nine fifteen and so forth. But, uh, we're going to be staggering the cars all through the big parking lot rather than coming in off of Abbey cause we can't stack that, that many. And then what we could stack inside, we're using that area initially for the ribbon cutting and, and opening of the center. So we won't be able to stack in the corridor inside the building. So folks may want to just, you know, give some serious consideration to thinking about how they want to come throughout the morning rather than everybody showing up at.
Ten o'clock.
At ten o'clock when the door opens right away.
I think we should talk about what items we're going to be accepting at the location on that day so they don't start bringing like big console televisions and things like that.
I, I can kind of wing it here. Um, the, I don't have the list in front of me. Some of the things that we, we, we will not be taking, uh, and I'm glad actually for this opportunity, I should have, I should have thought about that. Things like motor oil, we won't take. There's plenty of, there's plenty of places out in the community. We do not want to compete with the private sector for collection operations. We won't be taking aluminum cans or scrap metal or things like that. And people are going to go, well, why are the collection center, you're not doing that? We have surveyed the local, uh, providers of services and found that there is sufficient, uh, ability to recycle those things in our community already and we should not, and government should never compete with the private sector when they have those things available. Now, since they said we don't take motor oil, will we take, say, diesel fuel or gas, old gasoline? Yes, we will. There's very limited availability to dispose of them properly within this community. So we've done, I want to call it an extensive research, but we made sure that we're augmenting the things that already exist here. Will we take electronic devices? Absolutely. It's one of the big things, trying to get the e-waste out of the landfill and then get it into recycling. We'll take TVs, things like that. Uh, no console TVs, no TVs bigger than twenty-seven inches.
Fifty pounds.
Thereabouts, but we say twenty-seven inch. We don't have any Arnold Schwarzenegger's over there, uh, picking stuff up out of these cars. We'll take all kinds of paints, polymers, uh, paint thinners, uh, detergents, drain cleaners, uh, Clorox. Things, things along those lines that you may find that you, you had cleaners that you don't want anymore, you want to dispose of. Please don't put them down the sink, bring them over to this collection center. Just put them in a box, bring them over. Uh, we have an availability, we have a pamphlet that's going out and a list you can check off cause you have to fill it out, what the, the, uh, things you're disposing of. Those things that are not identified, we have a special procedure for handling those and so forth. Right, right now, uh, we're partnered with Ross Environmental, local company, uh, that's going to take the waste out of there. And they've been over at the center doing dry runs with some of our new employees, bringing mock cars in and, and bringing in various containers and how to handle them and, and what needs to be done. So we're very excited about getting the center open. We ran into some challenges, as you well know, throughout the process. We're able to overcome those things. If there's a question about, uh, what you can bring or what you can't bring, they can contact the solid waste department and they'll be giving some guidance on that.
Will be on our website by any chance? Will we, will take and won't take? Should it be posted, I would hope this, by the end of this week versus next week?
I would hope it could be posted today because I got the list. So it may, it may well be out there. The, and of course, we take tires, we're going to have a self-service area that'll be open during the day for tires. So you don't even have to wait in the big, long line. You can drive up to the bins, we'll open them during the day and you can put your, your tires in there. Obviously, we don't take commercial tires and we don't take, we do not take tires and/or disposal, uh, chemicals from businesses. They're responsible for their own.
Presidential.
Uh, but that's going to help with the tires because it's a self-serve area to drive up. Now, for those people that, that, that may or may not follow the rules, we do have the whole area under surveillance and we are, we are looking for those people that, you know, leave stuff standing in front of the door or outside the fence or, uh, anything else. So that, we had to do that because we were afraid that people would come up on off-hours and just leave stuff stacked over the parking lot. It has happened, uh, before at, when we've done collection days, we've shown up at the collection day and find stuff stacked on the corner before we even got there and set up the, the trailers. It's going to be a learning experience. I hope the public is patient with us. We're, we're going to see what works and amplify that. What doesn't work, we're going to modify that so that we provide a good service. We're open Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday. Monday from ten until six, Wednesday ten until six, Saturday from, excuse me, Monday and Wednesday at noon until six. Saturday is ten to six. If that doesn't prove sufficient, then we have the ability to, to open additional hours depending on the volume that's taken. I hope everybody comes out. It will be a day for the families, there are hot doors, going to be one of them romper jumper rooms for the kids and.
Face painting.
You know, the new transit facility is over there, so they'll be able to see what we're doing with our transit maintenance garage. We'll probably have that open if anybody wants to look. And we've got the area pretty well done up. And obviously, uh, this is the Port Authority's commercial complex that the building was donated. And we're still looking for tenants for fifty thousand square feet. So I got to put a little ad out there, uh, to, uh, fill up other parts of the building. And we have very aggressive rental rates if anybody's interested. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. End of my report.
Okay. For you, Teresa. So you and Jerry.
Yesterday, the West Shore Commuter Rail Task Force had a meeting in my office. And we were advised by Pam Novak, who works for Lorraine County Transit, i.e. the Commissioners, that she had received, uh, permission to submit to the Federal Transit Administration the Alternatives Analysis Grant, uh, for the West Shore Commuter Rail. So we've been working on that for a long, long time. This is the earmark that Betty Sutton gave to us, the Commissioners, in two thousand and eight. And now we finally applied for it. We expect within the next thirty to sixty days that the grant funds will be available. And also yesterday, we had an intern working with Virginia Haynes. And he has, um, accessed Facebook and Twitter for us. So that's the new exciting thing that's coming along. And, um, he's done an excellent job. So, visit us there. The other thing at eleven o'clock today, Fund for Economic Future is going to be announcing who the winners of the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars are. And the Commissioners, together with the engineer and the alliance, are, uh, one of the finalists. We don't know if we're in the top. We don't know if we're in the top three, though, so we're waiting for the vote totals to come in and see if we get any money or not for our stormwater project. So those are some exciting things happening. That's it.
Madam Clerk?
I bless you.
Thank you.
Pass me along.
Commissioners, Senate proclamation proclaiming June 15th as Elder Abuse Day to job and families. Board correspondents?
Remove the reading, be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board? I see no takers. Move that we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator. And I guess, Jerry, you didn't have any, did you? Okay, just the Administrator.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable
Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties secure and safe Ohio Ride Share makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE or register online at ohio rideshare.com. Point, click, ride.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskiville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding "Helm" to his family name. Like the old Saxon "Ham," the suffix meant "home." The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rosson in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossons were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Aliria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Aliria and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed, and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Aliria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of 1817, moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The County Fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of '76." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut...